Good evening and welcome to the Worcester.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Worcester School Committee. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, once so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Member Alvarez.
Present.
Member Biancaria. Member Benanda.
Present.
Member Guardiola. Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
So we start with the Student Advisory Committee items. Essay four dash ten to review restroom policies throughout all Worcester Public Schools, Worcester Public Schools, high schools, and consider implementing an online sign-in for all schools, preventing students from missing class time and allowing teachers and staff to keep track of students who may be misusing the bathroom pass.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jane Batar. I'm a senior at Worcester Tech. And starting off with this item, we've all noticed throughout the student advisory board that restrooms have been a complicated area for all schools. Policies are different at each school, and it's become a topic of interest between staff and students. And we believe like an online sign-in where students would actually like put in their ID, their names, when they are going to the bathroom would have many benefits, like keeping record of all students and making sure they're not using the bathroom every period, because a lot of time that may lead to like misconduct and teachers, you know, being displeased, prevent time in class being missed, so their learning time wouldn't be hindered. And overall, just make it easier for teachers on duty, because it's difficult if a teacher is in charge and they notice there's more than, there are more students than there should be in the girls' or boys' room, and that just becomes an issue, and then a lot more people have to get involved. So just make it easier. Schools like my school, Worcester Tech, we do have an online sign-in, and it's definitely been helping the school when it comes to students like signing in into the bathroom. So overall, it'd be, believe it'd be very beneficial.
Thank you. So we send that to administration. Those that oppose, no. So audit. And with essay four dash eleven to consider more environmentally friendly practices within all Worcester Public Schools, including the implementation of recycling bins at each printer within the school, which could have the benefits of reducing the volume of general waste while preventing the mix of recycling and trash, lowering waste disposal costs for the schools, and most importantly, teaching students the importance of the environmental stewardship, which aligns with the Worcester's overall sustainability goals.
Thank you. So a big thing about this item is that we're all students who are living in the new age of like culture and like climate and environment is all like big things we're talking about, and a big part of our environment is the climates, like the actual climate we see, and we know that like issues have been arising. And if we're taught about it in school, a lot of students aren't actually putting that to use what they know and what they're learning in classes, like in AP Environmental Science, like you learn about the climate, but you're not actually doing anything to benefit the climate. So something as small as recycling bins at printers would really benefit the schools a lot more than people may think. It's so easy to just take a piece of paper and throw in the trash instead of taking a piece of paper and putting it in the recycling bin, which would actually benefit the environment a whole ton more, reduce volume of waste, like I said, lowering waste disposal costs. And overall, students will learn these lessons, and these lessons will become habits, and that will affect them in their future when they're realizing that these small practices overall just benefit everyone around them.
Thank you. So we send that to administration. Those that oppose, no. So audit. Four dash twelve to ensure that all high schools offer the same and mostly similar mental health resources, which includes the wellness rooms offered in many, but not all schools, where students can enter in comfortable, comfortable space to relax and recharge while using the help of staff to manage their strong emotions throughout the school day.
Thank you. So again, we've noticed throughout the student advisory board, we all come from different schools, and we've noticed that there's been kind of like differences between what's offered in certain schools. Overall, they're all getting better, like we, we're all starting to see an increase in resources, but to have like similar items would benefit students where it's like somebody from tech may not have a wellness room, but somebody from Doherty might not have a wellness room, or like, oh, well, I think that would benefit our school. And that would benefit all students. Wellness room is just one example. Obviously, there could be many other things, but to have like common resources would just let kids know that like there are things open to you, staff want to help you, and here you can do this at any school. You don't have to just go to one school to have this thing offered to you. So overall, we believe that also like with the push on mental health, like that would benefit very much.
Thank you. So we're also sending that to administration. Those that oppose, no. So audit. And four dash thirteen to consider different and less formal strategies of gaining student opinion on relevant topics within the district, such as the amount of screen usage per day or mental health resources by having open discussions throughout the day led by staff to prevent student, to prevent student ideas from being overlooked.
Thank you. So every student, regardless of whether they have a leadership position or not, like they may not be on like the student advisory board, or they may not be in their school's student council or anything like that, but they definitely have an opinion on their school and what could benefit their school. They may just be too shy to say it. So to actually get opinion on what students want and to like know what will really benefit students, it's, makes a lot more sense to take it exactly from the students and not just through like forms that they may not fill out. Or a lot of times, students aren't able to do extracurriculars where they can spend time after school, it can be due to transportation or their home life. So like actually going into schools and getting this opinion from students, whether it be like a discussion in their class with teachers they know, or it could be through events from the community within like specific schools, this would like, this is where you would get the real student voices coming up to the everyday student, not the student who does like a million extracurriculars and is speaking in front of the school committee, but a student who you would just walk in and see, and they definitely have like ideas that would benefit their school. And a big thing, like I wanted to include this, like the student advisory, like board that the superintendent, like that, that meets like I believe monthly, that's like a really good example of this, and, but unfortunately, not all students are able to be on that board, because you know, it's just select few students. So things like that, just like not relying on the kids who have the loudest voice, but all students, because they definitely all have an opinion on what could benefit their school.
Thank you. So we're also sending that to administration. Those that oppose, no. So audit. We'll move to the consent agenda. Member McCullough.
Sorry, through the chair, would it be okay to have the other student representative introduce themselves?
That's right. First meeting, right?
Rafael de Jesus, Joe Kramer Center.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any, any questions on that? Member Benanda.
Through the chair. Is the FOG meeting from Monday's minutes going to be concluded in the consent agenda, or is that going to be discussed separately tonight?
Be on the agenda.
Huh?
Not tonight. Okay. Thank you. Just a question on that.
It's not under the consent agenda.
Okay.
The FOG meeting is not, is not on the agenda.
So will the information about the student activity accounts be at the next agenda?
It'll be on the next meeting we have in January.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions you got on consent agenda? Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancaria. Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola. Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
So we will move to recognitions. Member Benanda, this is from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, to recognize two former Worcester Public Schools staff, Carmen Melendez, former director of multilingual education and director of guidance, and Dr. Esperanza, former multilingual coach and teacher for receiving the Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education Northeast Lifetime Service Awards to honor there who influenced the dual language bilingual landscape. Member Benanda, you want to speak?
Thank you. I put these both on this agenda because these are two amazing professionals that have, over their many years dedication to the Worcester Public Schools, made a big difference for multilingual education. So I really want, I need Dr. Esperanza, Oliveras Gualaramo over there, and Carmen Melendez, and Carmen is here with her family, and also Esperanza is here, so they could just come forward so that we could see them.
Yep. So we have some certificates here. Come right up front. Come right through. Come right up front. Come right up here.
Go, you get to stand.
Thank you.
So I want to say a few words about each of them. Some new people may, may not have crossed their paths, as I was very fortunate to do during my career here in the Worcester Public Schools. Carmen Melendez and I first met, as she was the head guidance counselor at South High Community School for many years, and her work with me was nothing total but amazing. We, she began working on the sale of bilingual literacy, which the Worcester Public Schools became one of the first schools in Massachusetts to really promote that amongst our students. We also, our bilingual classes at the time were Carmen herself, having been a student herself, a bilingual student at Burncoe High School, and graduating from there and going on to Assumption College, was dear to her heart. Those students were the students that she went after for us to have those students participate in AP classes. So we had the largest number of multilingual students at one time in the whole Worcester Public Schools, participating in AP classes and actually passing the classes. She went on, then, she left the Worcester Public Schools and then came back when I became superintendent, to be the director of, it was called bilingual education, but now multilingual education, and during that time exposed our students to excellent curriculum, and also started the first bilingual school, multilingual school in the Worcester Public Schools. She then went back to director of guidance, and she now has a great position in the Boston Public Schools, again, working with multilingual learners as well as special education students. She has been a gem with her heart and soul and passion in the Worcester Public Schools since she came back here from being a student herself. So I'm proud to know her. She was recognized, I did go to the ceremony, both of them were recognized at the ceremony along with other excellent professionals from around Massachusetts, but from Central Mass and the Worcester Public Schools, both of these were recognized with lifetime awards. Esperanza, I met also as my early years in the career. She was an excellent teacher with our multilingual students. She went on to become a coach to help all the teachers in the Worcester Public Schools to know how can we be most effective in working with multilingual students. Her other skill, as well as Carmen, was parent engagement, really working with parents, establishing their trust in our school system, and providing what parents wanted for the children of the Worcester Public Schools. Oftentimes, in my career as superintendent here, I would ask Esperanza, you know, what was the field of community with our parents for the work that we were doing, and she would always give good advice. So I thought, when I saw they both received this amazing award, and it's a state award, and it's a lifetime award, that we celebrate our students all the time, we need to be thankful and celebrate the people that have made Worcester Public Schools what it is, and also provided for our students all the things that they needed. So congratulations, both of you, and thank you very much, really, for your work, your dedication, and love for our students.
And we have a couple certificates here, in recognition of Dr. Esperanza Oliveras Guadaluama for receiving the Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education Northeast Lifetime Service Awards to honor there who influenced the dual language bilingual landscape. Congratulations. Carmen Julissa Mendez, Melendez, congratulations. You want to have your family come up, take a picture? Family want to come up, take a picture?
Claro.
You guys want to come up? Yeah. Please come up, take a picture. Venga, venga. Thank you so very much for your services. Thank you. Congratulations. Any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before, for them for two minutes. Those speaking will state their name, their residence, and the item on which they wish to speak for the record.
Good evening. Mildred Martinez, resident of Worcester, parent of high schooler at Burncoe High. I would like to first say thank you to the school committee and the administration for, you know, all the work that's being done. I'd like to address ROS four dash seventeen. Thank you for the emphasis on our middle and secondary learners. As a high school parent and as an advocate, making sure that my son goes into the world prepared, I appreciate the emphasis being put on making sure that there's rigorous course selections available to students all across the different high schools, but as well as resources and just, just availability to those not going the college route, going into the world, having that common sense and having that ability to go into the workforce as we all interact with these students and be really confident. So I, I commend and I thank you for giving a platform and a voice to parents like myself, you know, to be involved and have a voice for the students who we love and, and, and trust you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ann Bureau, Worcester resident, and my son graduated from Worcester Public Schools, and just want to thank this administration for hearing the parent voices, access to college, and readiness for college, college and career was one of the top needs of parents, so it's so great to, we're looking forward to the presentation, we're just so grateful for listening to the parent voice and listening to the different concerns, and this is one of them, so thank you so much.
Thank you. State your name and city of residence, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Rachel Pryor, and I'm a Worcester parent. I have a daughter at City View, she's in first grade, and I just want to thank this administration for listening to us, parent, and also to the community. And my, I would like to know what, what is being done to sanitize the classrooms, even though, and the schools, even though COVID is not, when I follow the COVID protocols, but we still have COVID and other illnesses that are still very much present. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
State your name and city of residence, please.
My name is Margine Gomes. I've lived in Worcester for many years, actually about forty-four. I'm eighty-five years old, I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother and a great-grandmother of children who have come through this system. And I'm hearing all these wonderful things, and I'm really honored to be here and to thank you, just as a new superintendent of schools and school committee, thank you for these changes and this work that you have done, which really will make a difference in this world today. And I thank you for this opportunity to express.
Thank you. Anyone else? See anyone online? All right, so we will close that portion of the meeting. We will move on to the report of the superintendent. From here anywhere together, curriculum and instruction, access to college and career. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you through the chair, as the, this college and career team comes on up, and it's a dynamic team, I will, and I'm going to allow Mr. Christodanis to introduce when, when I turn it over to him, so I don't butcher too many names and allow you to get seated. So next slide, please. Tonight, committee members, you will hear, there are two objectives for tonight's presentation. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, Casey, I didn't see. So the establishment of the college and career office, which there was a need, I think I noted it at the first year, that we had a lot of great programs going on in the district, and as the parents have shared, and thank you to, to all of you for speaking, and I just want to talk specifically to the last great-grandmother, you look amazing to have had, yes, so, thank you and kudos to you and your family. Anyway, back on track. So, you know, Worcester, as has been stated many times, has great programs for our children, and, and also what came out of the Listening and Learning Tour was, can we make these great programs across the district so that we have more access for our children? We want our, our children to, if their career requires college, then we want them to be prepared to college, to go to a four-year, earn that degree, move on to that career, because ultimately, that's our goal for children, right? If the career doesn't require college, maybe it requires a two-year program, a technical program, whatever that is for the child, we want to make sure that they had many opportunities to experience that, and we put them on the right track. And what came from the families and, and staff was, we just need to keep working on expanding that and making sure that we have equitable access, so not just some children can get in, but we can have more and throughout the city. So tonight, what you will hear, under the leadership of Mr. Christodanis, is how we have identified programs that prepare students for success in college, career, and life, and how these programs are focusing on the critical skills, knowledge, and social emotional growth, and they're all grounded in the vision of a learner for the graduates of Worcester Public Schools, which is our espoused desire for our children. You will also learn about the efforts to ensure all students have those equitable access, or have that equitable access to high-quality programming and resources. Really, it would take probably about three committee meetings to really go through everything that is going on in this office, so we are keeping it at a high level, and just want to give you a little taste of what this team has been working on in the past, I'd say two years, it's been just under two years. Next slide, as always, staying the course, staying committed to the strategic plan, our promise to our future, specifically college and career readiness, access opportunity fits under the priority area of equitable resources and educational programming. Next slide. As we dig deeper into the programming, or the, I'm sorry, the priority of equitable resources and educational programming, it's really aim one that we're really talking about. It dabbles into aim two and aim three, but aim one is our big aim around, in our college and career office, enhance and provide equitable and consistent learning experiences to prepare scholars for lifelong learning success, pre-K through twelve. So we tend to think college and career is only at the secondary, but we know that it has to start down in preschool, we have to start preparing and giving children opportunity to practice some of these skills, and I think the industry likes to say durable skills, right, of which, you know, you need in the career, in that career space. And then finally, next slide. Although it's not a direct correlation to the superintendent goal around learning communities that define, refine, and implement and monitor culturally responsive policies, the equitable piece, making sure that we have a variety of children sitting in these programs, is a, a component of that. So this is, again, not a direct, but yet it has implications for that goal. So that's the link to the superintendent's evaluation. With that, I am pleased to turn this over to Mr. Christodanis and his team, a piece of the team, because not everybody is sitting up here, but it's a very large office, and with that, lead us through it, Mr. Christodanis.
Through the chair. Thank you, Dr. Menares. My name is Chris Christodanis, the administrative director of college and career readiness. To my left is Julianne Gamache, who's the director of CVTE for our comprehensive programs. To my right, Dr. Emily Lehman Miller, who's the director of innovation career pathways and connecting activities. And in front is Dan St. Louis, who is the director of early college and advanced placement. So without further ado, next slides, please. There's two more to go, I think. Next slide. Okay, so our desired state as a department, we look to see, when we audit all the programs within Worcester Public Schools, what was the best approach, and how are we going to pull this all together, and align pathways and all our procedures, and we realize how many things that this district has been doing and wanted to put it all together. So beginning at the elementary level and running through high school, students will be able to develop a personalized portfolio and plan to ensure they are empowered to make educational and extracurricular choices that are authentic to them. The goal is to close opportunity gaps and connect scholars to highly skilled careers and experiences with a larger goal of creating a better community, city, region, and world overall. Through that, we have started with our high schools and currently working with our middle schools, and we also have some programming that we're bringing to our elementary schools, as well as what we're piloting and running with our Spark Program and Vision of a Learner, as well as what our future-ready schools look like, and that's a big part of who we are as a department. Next slide, please. And one more. Thank you. So the Office of College and Career Readiness, as Dr. Menares said, has sixteen programs within it that we are responsible for, making sure run smoothly throughout the district. They reflect, again, what we're trying to do on a day-to-day basis to just basically provide more opportunities to our students that, with additional time to explore their interests, build critical skills, and engage in hands-on learning experiences that connect classroom knowledge to real-world applications. Out-of-school programs can offer tutoring, internships, mentorships, and exposure to industries, while college and career programs help students set goals, develop technical and soft skills, and navigate pathways to post-secondary education as well as the workforce. We want to continue to have those durable skills be present, so students can be successful, even if they do go to college and they're worrying about skill sets, that those will transfer to what they do in the workforce after college as well. Next slide, please. We'll get back to this roadmap. We'll get back to this roadmap again at the end of the presentation. But the key here is that we run through our elementary, middle and high schools about building, strengthening and demonstrating. At every level of the schooling, Worcester Public Schools is working to provide a clear roadmap to guide students in those areas. And again, we'll revisit this in the end of the presentation, so you'll see the programs that we have and how we're reaching to help with students with their critical thinking, collaboration skills, those foundational exploratory skills, and then also how they can demonstrate that and show that in the classroom. Next slide, please. The goals for the Office of College and Career Readiness, and this is something that we've talked about as a team, we've grown from a smaller team originally into a big one now with a lot of different ideas, a lot of different backgrounds, also from the support of Dr. Menares, Dr. Morse, executive directors, and also throughout the teachers and the principals. We've been able to come up with these four main goals for our office to sort of follow and align with. And what does this all mean? It means the creation and implementation of comprehensive coordinated plan that ensures students receive a seamless and its future-focused learning experience from one grade level to the next. There's a connection between all of the learning opportunities that they have. The plan emphasizes equitable access to resources, opportunities and support. It also ensures that all students can fully participate and benefit regardless of background or circumstances, and it prepares students with skills, knowledge and experiences needed for success in college, careers and beyond. A lot of it brings to us, as we mentioned with future-ready schools, authentic engagement, a sense of belonging and building a capacity and knowledge for them to be successful. Next slide, please. So we have the college readiness programs that we offer in our district, and I will start off with the first one. We have, next slide, you'll see the Avid program. And we've had Avid for a long time in the district. We've sort of revamped this, and as you can see, under Liz Ward, who is our curriculum specialist for Avid, has helped work at the advancement via individual determination, development and to help us find the right students. We felt that over time, from looking at these programs, that we needed to identify, and those improvement strategies are right there, recruiting and building, creating awareness, increasing enrollment, helping with fast completion, increasing the college applications and acceptances, first-generation students and providing opportunities that they may not know about, helping with their families. We have over thirteen hundred students that are involved with this. The Avid curriculum is based on writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization and reading. It also includes tutoring sessions to provide support for success in the academically rigorous curriculum. We have colleges that bring in tutors that show up at all of our schools and tutor these students during the day and sometimes after school as well. Additionally, the Avid students receive information about colleges and universities through field trips, guest speakers, scholarship opportunities and college admission requirement information that they may miss from time to time, just depending on how many things go out to them, because it can be overwhelming to also not know the process for it. Avid students are also encouraged to take part in rigorous coursework such as advanced placement and dual enrollment. So those are some great opportunities for them. Also, we are working at aligning this through the high schools, middle schools and elementary schools as well. So some great opportunities and those students can stay with us over that time period. Next slide, please. We also have college and career courses. Currently, we have those courses in grades seven through ten. The classes in Worcester Public Schools equip students with the skills, knowledge and experiences needed to succeed in their post-secondary education as well as the workforce. They work to encourage them to build off their durable skills. They blend rigorous academics, career-focused learning, real-world applications and empower students to explore their passions and set meaningful goals for their future, both short-term and long-term. The classes, as I mentioned, we offered were in grades seven through ten currently, with generally a ten-week program that we go through in each of the schools. Each student, for the most part, is signed up for those classes. What we found is, looking at other school districts and going through, we had, there was a gap. We had classes that were offered at many high schools, but not necessarily in grades eleven and twelve. There's always that cry for financial literacy. Some of the things that we want to continue to make students aware of as they continue on their high school education and find the best ways to afford and attend college or to prepare themselves to pay bills and what things actually cost in the real world. So we work with them on that and we've implemented for next year, eleventh and twelfth grade coursework, which you can see from there. And this restructure allows for six years of college and career readiness, building skills with the same students and opening things up for opportunities and scholarships for all students. And we also hope to be able to use this with some of the programming and curriculum that we use within Avid to help support some of these students as well. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. St. Louis about advanced placement and early college.
Thank you, Mr. Christonas. Good evening, everyone, through the chair. Our advanced placement and early college programs are available across all of our high schools. Advanced placement courses give students a chance to tackle college-level work while they're still in high school and earn college credit and placement. That is a longstanding program in Worcester Public Schools, is well-known. It continues to grow, it continues to improve. So this year, we've got over seventeen hundred students citywide taking place in advanced placement, or taking part in advanced placement. And those seventeen hundred students are enrolled in more than twenty-nine hundred courses. Three of our schools this past year earned spots on the college board's AP honor roll, and that measures both schools' participation as well as their scores, as well as the depth of courses students are taking, essentially the number per student that students are taking. Every school showed improvement in the past year. Citywide, our qualifying scores were up six percent. Early college is a newer, but also large and growing program. We have over a thousand students enrolled in early college, again, across all of our high schools. There are more than thirty courses available per year. This is a semester-based program, whereas AP is a year-long. The goal is for students to earn between twelve and thirty mass transferable college credits. So the goal of early college here is for their credits that they've earned to be able to transfer across all public institutions in Massachusetts, whether that be the community colleges, the state universities or the UMass system. Our partners here at early college Worcester are Quinn-Sigmund Community College and Worcester State University, and we work very closely with them on running this program. It is a hundred percent free. This is a DESI and Department of Higher Ed sponsored program. The students get all their courses and books and materials provided. And the state goals here, there are five pillars, equitable access, academic pathways, enhanced supports, connections to careers and effective partnerships. And the goal is really to increase students who are college-ready to provide authentic, engaging experiences for our high school students. And ultimately, the goal, and it's starting to, it's hard to track, but it is starting to play out, ultimately, the goal is to have greater persistence in and through college. And the data is showing that students who have taken part in early college programs are achieving that at a higher level than students who have not. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mr. St. Louis. Through the chair, good evening. I am happy to present on the Innovation Career Pathways program. The Innovation Career Pathways program is actually a sister program to early college. It's a state-designated, high-quality college and career program that we offer in Worcester. We're currently serving three hundred, just over three hundred students from Burnco, Claremont, Doherty, North, South, University Park and the Gerald Kramer Center. We work with them and their school teams. We have a number of staff members that are designated as Innovation Career Pathways liaisons and partners. We work closely with them and they come over to Worcester Tech to take their technical courses at Worcester Tech two evenings a week. And we're able to offer them opportunities to explore high-demand industries, their local high-demand industries. We work closely with local industry partners to make sure that the curriculum is tailored to industry needs. We serve students and they have opportunities to explore pathways in advanced manufacturing, allied health, biotech, business and marketing, computer science and IT and construction and engineering. It's an extended-day program because the students are, come over to Worcester Tech for their technical courses. And in order to complete the program and receive their certification for Innovation Career Pathways, they have to take two career and academic planning classes at their home schools. This is in addition to regular college and career readiness classes. They take the two technical courses in their industry at Worcester Tech, and then they also are required to take two advanced courses, and these can be AP, dual enrollment or early college. And finally, and in many ways, most importantly, they also complete a one-hundred-hour internship with a local employer or a capstone course with us back at Worcester Tech. The vast majority of Innovation Career Pathways students are from populations underrepresented in these high-demand industries, and that's a pillar of the program, a requirement of the state. So actually equitable access is something that we're, have been committed to since the inception of the program.
Thank you, and through the chair. Next slide, please. The Chapter Seventy-four programs in Worcester Public Schools, we provide a wide range of our CTE programs for high school students. We have nine programs offered at the three comprehensive schools and twenty-three programs at Worcester Technical High School. CTE equips scholars with specific skills and practical knowledge that directly prepares them for employment in various trades and professions. This enhances their employability and contributes to economic growth. Students graduating from a CTE program are prepared for advanced studies at a college or university as well as entering directly into the workforce. Next slide, please. This highlights the programs that we have in our comprehensive high schools. At Doherty High School, we are proud to now have four programs. North High School, we have our two programs, and South High School, we have three programs. Next slide, please. As mentioned, Worcester Technical High School has twenty-three programs and they are broken down into four academies. Next slide, please. I think our data's overlap, but this shows the innovative career pathways, their applications and enrollment over the last three years. And next. Sorry.
Through the Innovation Career Pathways, you can see that from the first slide, the applicant pool for ICP programs rose slightly to two-hundred-and-nineteen in twenty-four, twenty-five. Enrollment for first-year students in grade ten is roughly flat across the three years. And then the full enrollment has increased through three years, as Dr. Lehman pointed out, to three-hundred-and-one this year. In regards to the Innovation Career Pathways for multilingual learner students, the ICP enrollment close to district percentages for the past two years, students with disabilities enrollment percentages are below the district for three years with little change for this school year. For Hispanic-Latino students, the enrollment remains below the district across the span of three years, but is consistent across those three years as well. And again, the enrollment is based off full enrollment for the district. Next slide, please. Comprehensive high schools, the applicant pool for entering the comprehensive high school programs has increased from seven-hundred-and-six to seven-sixty-one in the past two years. Note that the applicant number for twenty-two, twenty-three is unavailable due to previous of our time. It should also be noted that the twenty-four, twenty-five students had three new programs at Doherty, as Ms. Gamache pointed out. And that contributed to, obviously, the increase of applicants and enrollment pools this year. Next slide, please. And our underrepresented groups for the multilingual learner students, the comprehensive high school enrollment has remained below the district for three years, although there was a significant gain from thirteen percent to twenty percent this past year. Similarly, students with disabilities have a significant gain going from eleven percent to sixteen percent in the most recent years. And the Hispanic-Latino students enrollment remains below the district, but the percentage has been gaining across the span of three years and up thirteen percent from the previous year. Next slide, please. And Worcester Technical High School data, the applicant pool for entering the Chapter Seventy-four programs at Worcester Tech has been roughly consistent for the past three years, one-thousand-and-sixty-nine, then nine-forty in this past year, seven, nine-seventy-four. Similarly, the percent of applicants accepted has remained consistent at thirty-six to thirty-eight percent. Multilingual learners, next slide, please. Both schools' population, as well as the incoming grade-nine students for the past three years, are below the districts, although both have been increasing over this time period. Students with disabilities have been approximately flat at about sixteen to seventeen percent, while the incoming grade-nine percentages have decreased a tiny bit. For Hispanic-Latino students, incoming grade-nine population is slightly less than the district's percentage for all three years, but is roughly on par with the school's percentages. Next slide. So with all of that information, what are our next steps for our Office of College and Career Readiness? Next slide, please. And this brings us back to our roadmap and where we go. And if you've, in education, whether it's academics, whether it's curriculum, whether it's the workforce, whatever it might be, skill sets and building, you've probably heard the words backwards design. And we want to know what do our graduates, what do we want them to look like? And what do we want them to be able to do? And you can't just do those things necessarily and throw them at them in high school, but there's a process that takes place that we're building throughout that is already in place with the teachers, with the assistant principals, principals with support staff, paraprofessionals. And this comes from Dr. Menares and is all the way down and led from the top about how we're going to build this amongst our students and what it is that we are doing. It brings us back full circle. In each level of the schools, we have this roadmap that we work with our students, we're going to build, strengthen, and then they can demonstrate their skills before they graduate. They've, by developing critical skills and fostering exploration, they can set goals and they can begin to connect their academics and their work to real-world experiences. Worcester Public Schools prepares these students for lifelong success through rigorous coursework, which you've heard about tonight, career programs, which you've heard about, and then counseling that inspires curiosity and future aspirations as putting, you know, not only teachers, but professionals, people in the community in front of them, so they can understand what opportunities are available to them. Next slide, please. So moving forward, we have our goals that are listed there, and I'm just going to highlight a little bit about each one quickly, is that when we want to expand program access, we want to ensure all students, regardless of background, have equitable access to diverse college and career readiness opportunities. We want to be able to do that for all of our programming as we go through everything that exists, elementary, middle and high school. We want those opportunities to be for our students. We want to strengthen industry and higher education partnerships. We have some great partnerships now. They continue to grow. Specific people are geared towards communicating with each of these partners, from the Chamber of Commerce to our local colleges, to our area businesses. We have so many people that are reaching out to us. We've done some innovative things where we've had reverse job fairs. Instead of sending our kids to them, we're sending the employers to us so we can tell them what it is that we are doing and what their needs are. Because unless you, you know, truly do that and bring them into what you're doing, they won't necessarily know. We don't want them guessing. We want, don't want them to assume. We want to be able to show them, this is what we have for you. Enhance curriculum integration. And we want to embed that college and career readiness skills, such as critical thinking, communication, problem-solving, all the things that we see in our vision of a learner. We want to get that into our curriculum because we're doing it, but we want that language to be common amongst all the people that are doing it. Improve family and community engagement, which is so important to be able to support our families. A lot of these students may have to do them on their own, but we want to help them provide for themselves and their futures as well as their families. But we want our families to know what we have available as well by open houses, by bringing them into our schools, getting there any way possible, providing opportunities for their kids to be successful and to find out that there are opportunities for them. It means a lot for a lot of these families, as we've heard at many of these school committee meetings. Invest in professional development. You've got to train the educators, counselors, deliver high-quality guidance, instruction with workforce and post-secondary education trends. Oftentimes, people know what they've learned on themselves, and so it's important for us to be able to tell them about everything that we're doing, but specifically to them, how they can use everything that we do to put in their arsenal to help support them or to be able to point students and families in direction of the people that can help them and provide them the service instead of just saying, I think we do this. We want everybody to know that. So we're going to increase that professional development around them. And then monitor and evaluate outcomes. We're going to reevaluate every year when we go through all these. That's why we looked at, particularly, Avid and our college and career readiness curriculum. Specific to that college and career readiness curriculum, we realized through Liz's investigative work that we weren't providing college and career readiness classes in eleventh and twelfth grade, which prohibited our students from being able to apply unless they were an avid student for the DELL Scholarship and higher scholarships, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year that were renewable, that we didn't necessarily offer a full gamut of classes to eleventh and twelfth graders in regards to the coding of college and career ready. So we're excited to do that. And then lastly, we want to foster early exposure. It's a process. It takes time. We want to have common language with all of our students. When students come to the middle school in the next two or three years, they're going to have heard the terms that we're using. They're going to know what it is that we're doing, their expectations. They'll be aware of the programming we offer, how important it is to build on those skills because they can be successful and they can be determined to do all that they do, where maybe academics, maybe isn't their strong suit, but finding a way to work hard, work together, to communicate those things and find help. together, to communicate those things and find help that is okay, and that although you may not do that, it may be a workforce or a skill set that you have that you can carry out into the real world and get those experiences. So that is where we're moving. The next slide is something I promised a little while ago. I know Case is going to try to get it up there, but this is something that we have for all of our schools. South High is the first one. The other schools should have theirs in January, but this is so our families in one, you know, one stop just can do this. We have individual ones for each, but this is what you'll be seeing from the comprehensive high schools with opportunities, so hopefully it will go.
South High Community School offers three vocational pathways: culinary arts, diesel technology, and early childhood education. Over the course of four years, students are exposed to a workforce environment. They will earn industry-recognized credentials and gain experience through co-ops, while networking with industry professionals through guest speakers and field trips. All programs are open for application midway through eighth grade, with acceptance through a lottery system. Each program is a 900-hour, four-year commitment. By the end of their high school careers, students will be prepared to choose a career pathway, advance their education with higher learning, or military service. South High, where learning works.
Thank you. And so that's what we have for South High right now. We have individual videos as well for each of those programs. We are building those also for North and Dougherty, and then Worcester Tech has individual videos for many of their programs, and they're working on those as well. I want to thank Dan O'Brien, our Communications Office, for helping us put those together, as well as Channel 11, and a lot of our students who do some of this filming and the work as well. They do an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, continue.
Thank you. So I want to thank this team again, just to hear everything once again of where we've been and where we're going. It's very exciting. The work in Avid, you know, that was very close to my heart, so thank you for taking that on and taking it to the next level, and actually bringing it back to actually what we were supposed to be doing, which was first-gen or average student that we know can do more, right? And then to see the programs and looking at the data and just being reminded of it. I'm very, very grateful. I know the families are and the children are, and we're only going to keep getting better, and so to hear where you plan on taking it. And I'll just close with saying, I met with Chamber of Commerce this summer, and I said, you know, I think we're on the right track, but, you know, you're our workforce, you know, you're, we want to make sure that Worcester Public Schools is doing, is in collaboration with, and we're going down the right path. And they said, not only are you going down the right path, but it's accelerated so much more with the work that has been going on in this office. So thank you, because it's truly an economic driver for the city of Worcester, as much as it is to ensure that our scholars are ready for whatever they want to take on. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Member Benanda.
It was great. Thank you for your presentation. For me, it was great to see the programs that we started in 2016, all expanding and still being successful. So I personally want to thank you for all that, and I was personally very happy to see South High start the feature with the programs that we've had there for a very long time. My question I had for you was actually about Avid. It used to, you know, be that we had two people that were running the Avid office, and they were the ones coordinating basically all the work there, and also working with the colleges. Can you explain a little bit more about the structure of how Avid is right now?
Mr. Kasonis.
I certainly can do that, unless Liz would like to speak on behalf of it.
Through the chair, thank you. I'm Liz Ward. I'm the Avid Curriculum Specialist. Well, that was quite an introduction before with everything, and it really is, you know, a labor of love. I taught Avid for 18 years. I'm passionate about it. So as far as the two people who were there before, I, I'm Wonder Woman, and I can do it all. But no, so I'm able to, I think through my, you know, the flexibility of my office and the team that I have and the support, that I'm able to develop these relationships with colleges, who I had before from being an avid teacher, really maintaining my relationships, recruitment of the tutors, retention of the tutors, that, you know, it was kind of like a natural progression. It's great when, you know, it's easy to create partnerships when the students want to be in the schools, you know? So it's kind of like a no-brainer. So it still works that way. I just take the place of both.
Through the chair. So Liz, is the elementary schools still have Avid in the elementary, and then how does it work in middle and high?
So yes, we do have it. Right currently, we have it in six elementary schools. One is a planning. Typically, we're doing, what we had in the beginning, were two elementary schools per quadrant. So we're working with that. When I came aboard, we sort of, not necessarily put them on hold, but the focus was much more important in the middle schools and high schools to kind of get those programs, you know, kind of underwrapped and see where we were going from there. Elementary school's going to be our push going forward. Right now, our Avid elementary schools, we have tutors during the day. They do pull out reading sections at Union Hill right now. It's not an elective in the elementary. It's embedded into the fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade curriculum. So it's more of the wicker strategies. We're working on the speaker series, of working on kind of bringing the speaker series into the sixth-grade classrooms, more of like a career base for them. They're doing also college field trips in the sixth grade. When you get to the secondary, when you get to middle school and high school, it's an elective. And one of the biggest elements, I think, of the Avid program is to ensure that we have the proper student recruitment. And involved in that is really getting, you know, the Avid culture and awareness throughout the elementary schools, into the middle schools, into the high schools, letting the students know what's available to them, so they can have a choice to take the program. You know, as we, a lot of people say that everyone would benefit from Avid, and that is true in certain elements. You know, I think everybody can benefit from the executive functioning, or everyone could benefit from the leadership, the mentoring, the tutoring, but as a whole, it does take a specific student in the middle with that determination, who is going to be responsive to that rigorous curriculum and that push and that drive. That's why I think the CCR program is a great alternative to the Avid program, where you're going to gain a lot of those skills, but you're not necessarily going to be committed for a year or, you know, a four-year cohort throughout high school.
And through the chair, is there still association with the National Avid Program?
Well, we work with the national scholarships, and as far as, you know, being a national partner, we are like a national partner. We have, you know, we've just kind of moving into, we have new regional partners that, for an Eastern Regional, that we just came on board. She was actually with Avid years ago. You, I mean, you probably do. Her name is Judy Barbera, but she's back. And so she's a regional director, and she's doing, we're doing a lot more together in terms of spreading out, hopefully getting to see some national schools, you know, national demonstration schools, so we can kind of bring back even more.
Through the chair, also, there used to be, we used to do a lot of training for staff with Avid, right? So we would go to conferences, for example, San Diego. I think that was the original site of when Avid began. And then we would go to Philadelphia. There was a lot of staff training that was involved in that. Are we still able to do the staff training like that?
Through the chair, yes. We are absolutely hopeful for this. So far this year, we've done many trainings, where we've done a few of the Avid trainers come in, work with a lot of our administration. We've also done a path training here. We just did a two-day path training in October for the Avid elective, and, you know, basically revamping the program, getting everybody acclimated to it. Yes, I would love to go to San Diego. We're hoping for that, you know? Anytime, that's kind of one of our biggest things that, you know, our teachers would love that, and I think it's so beneficial, because anybody who has been in an Avid training or around it, I think it's a general consensus. They walk away feeling invigorated and, you know, ready to teach and ready to jump in. So yes, I would love it. I just, you know.
And through the chair, principals also went to those Avid trainings because principal being the leader of a school, it's really important that they understand what Avid's about, so that they're, when they schedule it, when they promote it in their building, they themselves are Avid-trained, and that makes a difference, too.
Through the chair, yes, I agree 100%. And that's a lot of what our rebranding is about, in terms of spreading that awareness and sort of, you know, getting everybody back on the same page as to what it was, because I think we can attest to, you know, when Avid started, it was a powerhouse of a program. And by no fault of anybody's, that administration changes and teachers change, and they leave and they come and go, and I think, you know, there was a lot of other new programs coming in. But I just think now that, you know, now that we have this new department, and we have the opportunity to do so, to get everybody on board, and it takes time, of course. You know, we're working, and, you know, not every principal can leave, but, you know, we're certainly going to do a lot more administrative trainings and things like that as we go.
Thank you. And last question is, how is it funded now? I mean, we had a lot of money through Avid grants that actually provided, you know, the training, and there were like, I want to say, at some time, there were 40 of us that would go to, you know, fly somewhere, stay in a hotel, three days Avid training. And now, is it funded just through the regular budget? Because is there any more grant funding for it, or how are we funding it?
Through the chair, Member Benanda, it's, currently, we have some grants that are supporting it, as well as it's funded through WEDF for this year.
Oh, WDF is funding. And what is the amount of the cost that's being funded?
Through the chair, when I took over the position, I think we had $100,000 in our account.
Through the chair, I want to say we had $100,000 every year at one point for Avid. Is that right, Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, yes. We've had that, and I, and we did have that. We've started the year from last year, same thing, where we didn't have all these things running, but we have the same number amount, a dollar amount for funding.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All set? Member Mailman.
At the, there's a lot. You are a fast talker, so I'm trying to keep my notes quickly when I go through that, which is probably part of the process, and you've jammed a lot of information in here. One thing I'd appreciate going forward through the chair is that we, we see in a similar fashion each of the, so I'm thinking of Dan's report about early college, and if we could see that, you know, in the terms of who's getting in, and if we could see a multi-year kind of thing, I, one of my early questions here is, why was there no data on comprehensive admissions like two years ago? That was, I mean, we must have people apply to the programs. We had programs. Through the chair.
When I came in, so that would be the year before I came back, or came in, and I worked with our data person, Jane, and we tried to find information, and because of how the admissions were handled, that data was in a variety of places, and we just were not able to gather it together in a, in a fashion that was able to be presented.
Through the chair, that was, it came from the schools individually. Now we have a district-level person that's running it. Next year will be even more streamlined through our program online with GoToCTE, where we'll have all of that data accessible. This was coming from the application process that went through each individual school before somebody handled it from the district office position.
You can see from a state-level why we would be questioning equity when we think about this kind of stuff. So that's so interesting, because a couple of those programs have been around for a long time. One of the things I did hear tonight that I'm interested in, especially on the vocational side, is what we're learning from other districts and what opportunities we're taking. I think there was a trip that the district took to Attleboro, which I think was supposed to be a comprehensive vocational school, and I, are there any comments you'd offer on what we're doing, even in other programs?
Through the chair. First off, as we mentioned in the slides, we're trying to reevaluate and trying to find out who's doing it well. And I think we're doing a very good job. We have people reach out to us all the time, obviously at Worcester Tech. It's a tricky situation at the comprehensives, and so what we're really trying to narrow down is the whole idea of scheduling. Scheduling is the bane of an educator's existence at the high school level, to provide opportunities, classes, and then to have it staffed correctly with the right number of students and make learning possible at the greatest level. What we learned, especially visiting Attleboro High School, it's a school of 2,000 students, with 1,700 taking 19 programs. That's pretty impressive. What happens with that is that, looking at scheduling within the district, we have our, you know, certain number of periods during the day where, you know, Worcester Tech has a week on, week off, they have same number of periods. We have a population that may move between schools. So Attleboro runs an A and a B day. They run it separately. They also run a four-by-four block schedule. So that's something that's a little bit different. With that, we looked at, this is a great opportunity in that, there's great availability of time for students to work in shops. We also have to look at, can we do that and keep our shops almost separate, and have them team-taught by teachers there, so the regular educational students can just have their day, and it's regular that way, and we can maybe run something different. Tantasco High School, in their vocational program, do something differently in both places. And the reason for that is it's easier to team-teach them. When students in the comprehensives have two periods a day of their vocational class, they then come out into the other classes with the regular red students that don't have the comprehensives, so they take all the cores together. So it's trying to figure that out, and then if you have a four-by-four block in one school, but you don't have it in another, students changing or moving around the neighborhoods or moving around the city would go in, and it is something that can be difficult. So we're trying to do it right and look at all options and possibilities before we move forward. But we are, we have committees and groups that are already analyzing what this next step is as we prepare for burnout down the road as well.
So through the chair, do we think we'll see improvements in shop time?
Through the chair, certainly.
In the comprehensive? And is, do we have a goal, a stated goal maybe, or what, like for next September or this year?
Through the chair, that's what I was going to say, time. Definitely not next September, and the reason being is, it's exactly what was just explained. There are multiple elements that we have to work with, with our educators, with our principals. If we were a one-high school district, it'd be very different, but because we have so many different high schools, we've all got to get on the same page about the scheduling, so that when children go to different schools, they don't lose out or miss out. And that's not something you do in a very short amount of time. You do that with your educators, because then to, and I said, I've been saying your last name incorrectly, Chris, so I apologize. So now I'm going to try to say it correctly. Mr. Kasonis, did I do it? I was putting Ts in there, I think. No, it's not, so you have to correct me. Anyway, when, when it, if a student is, you know, doing the time in shop, two hours, is it right? So then the match of that is then there's a group of students who are in their core class for two hours. A high school teacher doesn't typically teach two hours, so there's training behind that that we also need to work on. And so it's just, it's not something, if we want to do it well, and we do, and we want it to be successful and continue to improve upon it, then we need to work with our teams on that. And we're still in the, trying to figure out what this could look like phase before we even take it forward and get some thoughts from.
I'll say that I'm a little frustrated with that.
I know, I know.
We've been talking about that for multiple years, and so, and then, so I'll leave it be.
There's movement, though, so that's, that's.
The most important, I think, is that our families understand, and I think it is incredibly confusing to explain differences to them between what happens at Tech and what happens in the other schools. So back to Mr. St. Louis, I think you talked about the college tutoring that we have going on, and I was wondering which colleges were giving us tutors. Someone talked about that.
Through the chair, we do have some tutors that we have through the Avid program. We have them from MCPHS, Holy Cross, WPI, and then we also have Worcester State, which is a big group of students that come in that are also doing their pre-practicum hours that start in their sophomore year, that come and also do some tutoring in that program.
I'd like to make a motion that we actually get the data on that at some point, so hopefully we can have that. When I think about all that we're offering all our kids, and I think about the redistricting and all of it, the biggest thing that is in my mind is really kind of about school choice, and how much interest there is. choice and how much interest there is and how much of a lineup there is about kids coming from. And I think I'd like to make a second motion that we actually really revisit, and it's possible that we already, we still have an item. And is the item as clear as through the chair, um, that we might consider getting rid of school choice? Well, I, would someone else through the chair, Brian?
Through the chair, so, give it again. The expectation is that we'll have a response back to finance operations and governance at the January meeting. Um, and as it relates to school choice, that's a vote of the school committee that occurs every spring.
Okay, but, but I don't, I'm only here three years, but I don't remember any real discussion about that. And I think, um, with all these lineups and if we have kids that come into our system in, from Millbury or whatever town, um, in second grade or third grade, and they get chances for these slots that our Worcester kids don't, I think I am increasingly concerned about that. So I hope that through the chair, that we will have a real discussion about whether or not.
Through the chair, so the default position, you are a school choice receiving district unless you vote no. So I think by, I, I think there's been votes, but I don't, not sure that there's been discussions like there had been before you were a school choice receiving district.
So can I assume that that item in your committee means we're going to have a full discussion going forward through the chair?
Through the chair, so what we'll bring back is, so we're working with our attorney on what the requirements are for school choice. And so there'll be a full report available for the school committee for your decision.
Okay. That is not like it has happened in other years, which is, or at least in these few years that I've been here. We'll have a deeper discussion about that. Then I, then should I be making a motion?
No, through the chair, I already have a pending item on this in subcommittee. The vote of the school committee happens every spring, it's a separate item. This is a full conversation where administration will be getting back to us around what are, we are allowed to do as far as school choice and when it comes to the chapter 74 programs as a school choice district. So it's, there is a pending item with what you're actually asking.
Okay, so then we would take that, that full item would give us all the information so we could make a more informed vote in, um, June?
Through the chair, that vote usually occurs in April and May.
Okay, or May.
And regardless of what we do going forward as a district.
Yeah.
There will be some policy implications that will need to change based upon our current review or what is currently written as policy as to what may need to exist as policy.
Okay. Just a couple of other questions through the chair. Early college finances, you referred to it as a free program, but I know the colleges don't feel they get reimbursed properly. And so I'm curious if our conversations with our partners at Quinn Sig and Worcester State are still ongoing about financing for our early college program through the chair.
Yes, uh, through the chair, it's, um, so there's a couple of different, um, sources through which the program is, is, is funded. Um, so Worcester Public Schools receives a support grant which pays for a variety of, of things, events, recruitment, um, after hours, uh, for tutoring, for guidance counselors, for all that kind of stuff. The, the per credit amount that the colleges, uh, receive is determined by the state. So that's not funding that comes through any K through 12 district at all. So the colleges track how many students take how many courses, how many credits does that equal?
Yeah.
Uh, and the state, um, when I came on board in 2023, the per credit re, what they call it reimbursement, uh, from the state was 150 per credit, so essentially 450 per class.
Yeah.
Uh, then this past, in the past year, they've raised it to $180 per credit. And the colleges continue to, and not just our partner colleges, colleges statewide, continue to have those conversations with representatives and, and things like that to try to keep that per credit reimbursement, um, rising.
Yeah. Thank you. That's concerning because they need our stu, I mean, early colleges, they want our students there right now. All colleges are struggling right now with.
They do, they do. The, 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 our partner colleges, and I think really any higher institute of higher education that's involved in early college is very dedicated to it. They don't have to do any of this stuff. They, they fully believe in the mission and, and getting more and more college exposure um, to traditionally underrepresented groups.
Yeah.
And they are dedicated to that mission. Um, my view, at least, and only speaking locally, is that that's not preventing them, you know, that's not holding them back from offering classes and things like that. Um, but it's also, to be frank, not the amount that they are accustomed to getting per credit from full-time paying students. But their great hope is that by exposing and getting up to, and sometimes higher, 12 to 30 credits, um, through robust exposure to their own campuses, their, their stated hope is that those kids just roll right into their campuses and become tuition-paying, um, full-time students.
We only have 374 students through the chair at Worcester Tech. We were striving, we had reached at one point, I think, 380 plus. Can anybody respond why we are not at limit, at capacity at Worcester Tech?
Administration?
Through the chair, um, it's not an easy answer, I don't think, but it's, they, because of the number of programs that they have there now with students that will be on, um, in terms of the number of students that will be attending Worcester Tech in special education programs, um, and continue on through there, uh, with the number of students that are accepted and also, uh, based on the, uh, number of students. And let me make sure I get this right. Good.
It, it's actually a very involved conversation and I guess I should have taken it from the beginning. I did talk with, um, folks up there and they, they said that if more information is required, requested, they would be able to provide that because there's, there are a lot of pieces to that puzzle.
Can I make a motion then that we, um, get additional information on why that school doesn't have a higher student count? Thank you.
Student count for what? I missed it. I'm sorry.
Admissions. We've accepted 370 this year, I think is the number I saw on the report, but we should be closer to 400. And there's a very complicated answer evidently about why we're not there. And so I'd make a motion to get the additional information.
Okay.
And then I had an, and I just don't want to lose that earlier motion as well. Thank you.
We'll take them all together.
Okay, thank you.
Member McCullough?
Thank you so much through the chair. First of all, thank you so much for the presentation. You know, this is something that we've, I think my microphone just went out for a second. It's time to stop talking already. Um, continue to see these programs grow and, you know, as member Benanda mentioned, you know, some of these programs have been going on for many years, but we're continuing to expand them and really getting our students more opportunities to have exposure to them. And, you know, I, I actually really don't have many questions. Some of the questions member Benanda asked around Avid were questions I probably would have asked because Avid has also been something that I have, um, been very passionate about since I started on the committee. And actually even before that, I did a lot of community partnership programming with taking students, um, to college tours through the Avid program as, um, an outside role. So I've really been interested in the growth and expansion of the Avid program and I'm really happy to hear that what we're kind of doing is taking a look at the program itself, paused for a second, focused on where we needed to be at the secondary level and really doing that well, so then we can go back to the elementary level and continue to expand that and grow there. So I appreciate the feedback as far as that goes. One of the things I really liked, I was able to attend one of the reverse job fairs earlier this school year, and I thought that that was a fantastic opportunity and what a great way of thinking outside the box and kind of flipping the switch on that so that they're coming to us, so they know more about us and what we do to help them expand within the community and the businesses to have those opportunities. Something, you know, we've always talked about and something that I've really felt is that, you know, the success of our schools really impacts the success of our city. And we look at these types of partnerships and how we're making our students future-ready. And so when they're going off either to college or into the workforce, how what we're doing here is impacting that and really impacting the city as a whole. So I do continue to want to hear about the monitoring and evaluation that was talked about as part of the presentation, how we as the school committee can be supportive of these programs and help get those messages out to our families in the community more. Really happy to see that we're doing the individual videos so that the community and families can see what the opportunities are at the different schools. It was great to see that. Sell the video at the end. Um, and just again, you know, really if there are things that we can do as a committee, how we can be helpful, but very happy to see the continued growth and the opportunities for our students as far as, you know, the innovation pathways, the early college, the Avid programs and so many other things. And hearing that our students who are doing the technical and trade programs, the encouragement of actually trying to pursue those post-college, um, you know, whether they do decide to go on to a four-year program, a two-year program, or right into the workforce, that, that is part of what they're looking at. So thank you for the presentation. I appreciate some of the questions other members asked and look forward to those responses.
Thank you. All set? Member Alvarez?
Yes, I just have a question, um, for the college and career readiness slides that we were, we went over earlier. Students are often faced with many challenges throughout the school years. Whether these challenges started when they were enrolled in ninth grade or 12th grade, um, it may be possible that these vulnerable students have not thought about these different types of college or career readiness resources that are available to them at hand. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are or what your recommendations would be for students who want to utilize these resources later on in their school year.
Mr. Carsonus?
Well, through, through the chair, um, in terms of, you're asking, uh, students that maybe didn't, weren't on that path right away or trying to pick these things up as they go through, uh, school?
Correct.
Okay. Certainly, I think that we have, uh, it takes sort of a village, uh, to do that. And that's what we're trying to do. Your first point of contact, obviously, in most cases, and it's not necessarily the guidance counselor, but the counselor is there, they're well-prepared of, and knowledge of the programs. And we made sure that we presented our overview and audit to them, so they understood, all of them, explained each of those programs to them in the middle and high schools to all of our counselors. Um, and we realize, you know, some of them have, uh, certain loads and they have certain, uh, in each school depending on who they speak to. But making sure that all of our programs have the same message, same conversations, and that we've also been able to, uh, present, we did it at the very beginning of the year when teachers came back to present to the teachers. We've presented to the, the, the focused instructional coaches. Our, uh, assistant principals and principals have all heard about all of those programs that exist outside of their schools, so they can make recommendations for students to be able to say, this just doesn't work with me, this maybe doesn't fit, or I didn't know that. And we're working on getting all of those. It's not perfect, but we've improved on that process and plan to be able to reach out to students. Um, I had conversations, um, at the end of last year with the nursing department, uh, because you never know when students will share certain things with certain, uh, staff members. And if everybody doesn't know them, they just can't get that information to the student and they can't point them in the right direction. And a lot of times they may get stuck, they might get backwards, they go through, uh, some of those mental health crises that, that doesn't allow them to focus on what they should be doing, being a kid and being a student and, and working towards their future. And even, uh, we've, we've moved a lot of this towards our alternative school programs as well, uh, to try to incorporate some of the learning that we're doing. We can't do everything, but we can find those elective classes to promote skill development, see maybe some workforce opportunities in providing that to our students and then so that they have everything they can possibly choose from. And we're doing the best we can to make sure every student knows what we have. And it is overwhelming. At the same time, sitting down and, and I know the school counselors are working on short-term, long-term goals. It might be make the honor roll, pass your classes, but, uh, develop these skill sets so you can be, you're going to learn that you need to persevere and, and develop that so you can eventually work towards being successful and, and worry about what it is that you can do, be successful yourself and develop those things over time. So I think it's to know that it's a process and explain to kids, there's a lot of, there's a lot of kids now, especially seniors, is they're waiting to find out if they're getting into college, what am I going to do next? Where am I going? So we're, we're working through all those pieces as well.
All right, thank you. And I know it's important too, because, um, earlier on in the, in the year, I know, um, the school, the student advisory had brought up, um, some of the concerns around wanting better relationships with their guidance counselors. So I think that's really important that you mentioned that. Thank you.
Thank you. All set? Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for the hard work that you do. So we will approve and file the report of the superintendent with the motion for additional information on student enrollment at Worcester Tech High School and, um, why aren't they at capacity and the motion to receive data on the Avid program tutors. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes, I thought that I had two motions.
Yes, I have, through the chair, I have two motions. A motion to receive data on the Avid program tutors.
I think that was Molly.
No.
No? All the tutors.
You asked what colleges give us tutors and for the Avid program.
Well, it, it was actually which colleges are involved.
Okay.
Um, that was the question that I asked.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to, um, approval of grants and, uh, finance items. Any questions on those? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes.
So we'll go to general business, response from administration, member Biancaria made a motion to receive a report on hands-on learning taking place within this program by grade. Motion is to approve and file.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Miss Biancaria is ill tonight and is asked, will we hold those three items plus, um, four dash nine seven? Hold those collectively?
So we're motion to hold four dash one four, both of those, and four dash one ten as well?
Yep, and four dash nine seven.
Nine seven?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion is to hold those. Uh, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes.
GB four dash nine two, member McCullough, to have a, have administration review school names with magnet in the title and determine if it is appropriate designation and if not, to consider replacing the word magnet with elementary or designated so recommended by administration. Recommendation is to send this to FOG. Member McCullough?
That's fine by me.
Those that oppose, no?
Through the.
Uh, member Mailman?
Thank you. Um, I thought we already had this item in one of the committees.
We're, we're, uh, administration, we, um, recommend that it goes to FOG and consider it with GB four dash one one to consider possible revisions to the school boundary assignments and school quadrant assignments to become effective for 2026, 2027 school year. So we're taking them to.
Is this so that through the chair, so to make no changes until we do the other change? I mean, I'm.
That, that's the ask by administration to combine those two, yes.
My question.
So we will send that to FOG. Those that oppose, up, sorry, member Benanda?
I, I guess I have a question. I don't even understand why we're discussing, um, school boundary changes or assignments. Is there, I don't think we've been informed as to, I mean, I know it's been listed there, but we don't know why we're asking that, so.
I, I, I think we've been, we've been discussing this and we've been talking about, you know, just due to the population, and, you know, a lot of our schools are bursting at the seams, and just the alignment over the years, just trying to make sure that, that our district is aligned the right way, and just taking a look at it again. Nothing could change, or something could change, but we've been talking about that for a while.
Through the chair, so who will really make that decision, that's a big decision, and the magnet got in schools because of de-isolation, right, that's, that's why we got magnet schools, Tom Friend, this goes way back, the magnet got in there because of de-isolation, so that we were able to have different groups of students go to different schools in the city, and I have received phone calls from Worcester Arts Magnet concerned that we're, that we might drop that, so I guess that's why I'm questioning this item.
Yeah, we're going to send it to FOG, and administration will take a look at it, we'll take a look at the whole, whole thing, and we'll bring it back at some point. Member McCullough?
Thank you, and just to clarify for member Benanda's question, the item was only addressing schools that are no longer magnet schools, not the magnet schools that are currently active.
Oh, through the chair, thank you, I'm not sure people understood that, so that's a very important part to bring up in the conversation. Thank you.
So we'll make that motion with that amendment, member McCullough, you mind, with the amendment that it's only for schools that are no longer.
Yes, thank you, that was the intent of the initial item.
Thank you. So we'll make that one amendment, thank you. Member Mailman?
Sorry, more confusion. Tadling Magnet, is that a school we're going to discuss in terms of the name Magnet?
I, I think we're, yeah, let it go to, let it go to FOG.
Well, that's what he tried to do, but then you were trying to clarify, now I have a further question.
The item is to discuss schools that are not being used as magnet schools currently, administration is asking that we take the conversation around boundaries with that conversation to do it all together, so if it is a school that is not currently being used as a magnet school, that would be one that falls into it, I'm not, I don't want to necessarily single out schools right now as part of the conversation.
Okay, through the chair, it's, so long as we are, if magnet has a meaning, that it's the same meaning for all the schools, and admissions to these schools have the same admissions policies, which I don't think they have right now. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, and maybe what might help with some clarity on why we are recommending that this piece go in with the boundaries, there are some schools, this is, I think, really is just specific to elementary, I believe so, that may have magnet in the title, may have an admissions criteria, but may also, over the years, for some reason, start to get boundaries or addresses attached to that school, so it's a magnet school, but it also has boundaries, that's confusing. So that's why we want to do this all together, so that we clarify if you are a magnet school, it's because there's actually no boundaries associated with that school, you apply in, and then you get selected, that's why we want to do this all together, rather than just change the names, because over time, things have evolved, for some reason, we want to clean that up.
Thank you.
All set? So, we will take that with the amendment to the motion, we'll send that to FOG, those that oppose, no, so audit, GB 4-93 to review procedures around know-your-school nights to ensure maximum possible participation, additionally to consider transportation options via in-house transportation as legislatively and financially feasible. Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I do appreciate the backup regarding the transportation, part of this item was additionally to discuss the, well, maybe not so much procedures, I'm not sure what the right word, I don't need to make this an emotion, I just asked that administration work with schools, part of the reason I filed this this year is I had some concerns from families about the time that some know-your-school nights occurred, and that it was not conducive to the family population and parents being able to attend, so it was more that than anything else, and then the transportation would be a bonus of that wherever, something that could be figured out.
Thank you, so, go ahead. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, to member McCullough, so just for clarity, is it that the times were too early?
Yes, and that may work with some schools, it's just, if we could just keep an overall eye on that.
That's helpful, thank you.
So we will approve and file, those that oppose, no, so audit, GB 4-119 to review the Head Start program to ensure oversight alignment with program goals and compliance with federal performance standards. Member McCullough?
Thank you, this is essentially as it reads, Head Start needs to do this as part of their governance, that's why it's requested to go to FOG, so that's where the item is, thank you.
Member Benanda? You have a question?
For the next question, for the next item, thank you.
Okay, so that will go to FOG, those that oppose, no, so audit, GB 4-120 to review the report of applying agreed-upon procedures student activity fund testing for fiscal years ending in June 30, 2024. Member Benanda, you have a question?
I'm not on FOG, so I had a couple of questions about that, so as I look through it, I see that it's only middle and high schools that have the student activities accounts.
This is, no, I know, I know what you're talking, this isn't from the subcommittee meeting that we just had, this is a new one, this is, we're sending this to FOG, this isn't the one we took up last Monday, this past Monday.
You're saying this is not the one?
No, no.
Oh, so I'm looking at the 22, 23 ones, those have nothing to do with this.
No, it will come back in the next meeting.
At 20, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll send that to FOG, those that oppose, no, so audit, and GB 4-121 to review the independent accountants' report on applying agreed-upon procedures for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, end of the year fiscal year 24 financial report, we're sending that to FOG, those that oppose, no, so audit, and GB 4-122 to review the proposed shifts to the 2024, 2025 student handbook, based on the feedback from DESI, Integrated Progress Monitoring and Civil Rights Self-Assessment Document Review. Member Benanda?
My question is, I think there was somebody from the Worcester Public Schools on Robert Curran's webinar yesterday, and it's about the handbook, about the, we have to have committees now to look at the graduation requirements, and also the CD requirements for graduation now, which are going to be totally different, and I'm just wondering, that, those changes have to be in the handbook too, so will there, would that go to, something like that end up going to teaching and learning, or, I'm just wondering why the, would the handbook go to FOG, or would it go to teaching and learning?
It goes to FOG because it's finance and operations and governance, we handle, they handle the policy.
Oh, the finance part, so the information from yesterday's.
It's the governance part.
Webinar, will the administration be bringing that forward on the graduation requirements and the new CD requirements due to the MCAS not being a requirement for graduation? Now we have to come up with a committee with CD requirements and allow students who did not pass the MCAS to have access to try and prove that they can do the CD requirements, that from past years, so I'm just wondering if that will also be at the, maybe a next meeting of the, of the school committee?
Through the chair, so we have already started looking at the immediate steps that we need to take, working with our high school principals, identifying those students, we're focusing on our seniors this year to make sure that they're on track. As you know, Worcester Public Schools has Mass Core as part of our approach to educating our children, we are in a very good place, anything that needs to come to the school committee will be brought forward in a timely fashion so that we can implement, starting for next school year, right now, we're focused on our, our seniors to make sure that they are ready to graduate.
All set, so we're sending that to FOG, those that oppose, no, so audit, so that concludes the meeting for tonight, I wish you all a happy holiday, new year, enjoy yourself with your family and your loved ones, and thank you, good night. Motion to adjourn, those that oppose, no, so audit.